The meeting to order. Thank you all for attending. Role call, Kathy Tendrich, Virginia San Pedro.
George Presidlo.
So we'd like to approve the meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2018. I would need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion and we approve that.
And I'll second.
Any opposed? Motion accepted to approve the meeting minutes. All in favor, I'm sorry. So I would like to approve the motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 22nd, So old business. Item number one is to consider an act on changing the town hall hours. So in part of my campaign, when I was campaigning and door-to-door knocking, I listened to a lot of concerns and I wrote down a lot of concerns from residents in the town. And that was one of quite a few people's concerns is that our hours at the town hall Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, they just don't fit the working families' hours. So after careful consideration and talking to employees here and looking at what is our slowest day, we came up with the hours of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, excuse me, 8 to 5, Thursday, 8 to 6, and closed Friday. So the other thing that I took into consideration is I called all our surrounding selectmen that have similar hours to ours and asked them their pros and cons. They said that as far as saving money being closed Friday, there was a little bit of a savings, but not a big savings for being closed on Friday. But what they did tell me is the night that they were open late, they said the residents really did attend. In Canterbury, they're open until 6:30, and when I talked to the selectman there, he said they're busy right up until 6:30. So again, after meeting with department heads and talking to staff and dealing with the union, these are the hours that we came up with that we felt would best suit the residents and still stay within our union contracts so that nobody's hours were cut or increased. So Ginny and George, you have any?
Well, I got one question. What about the swimming pool on a Friday? Are you going to close the swimming pool on Friday or what's going to happen?
So my current thinking right now are in contact and talking and we had a meeting. What we're trying to do for Friday is to be able to have the reps and residents come here just like they do on Saturday because to close the pool on Friday would not be good for what the rest of the town will do.
No, I was asking a question, that's all. So you'd have somebody here?
Yes, we would.
Okay, is that all they will or does it even?
No, no. That would be, right now, they have classes from 7:30 to 1:30, and then they have open swim, 5 to 8 on a Friday night, which that open swim may change to another weekday depending on classes.
Okay.
But those are all the things that Lyra and I are talking about right now.
My only, not concern, but I guess, question is about lawyers and people like that that come to do business in the town that, you know, would expect it to be open in five days a week.
And that's one of the things that Rick Ives in Brooklyn had said in the beginning when they first changed their hours. He said it was a little bit inconvenient, but most of the attorneys do all of their stuff online now. So he said that. Once they got accustomed to the hours, they adjusted to that.
So what are you looking to do? You're looking for a motion or?
Yes, I would like a motion to do the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 8 to 5, Thursday, 8 to 6.
And closed Friday.
And closed Friday, yes.
And when would it start?
March 5th. We would like to start.
Well, I'll make a motion that we change the town hall hours to what you specified, Monday through Thursday. Okay, with your hours that you mentioned.
And closed Friday.
Well, and closed Friday, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to act on changing the town hall hours beginning March 5th, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, 8 to 5, Thursday, 8 to 6, and closed on Friday. Item number five, new business, is to consider an act on the tax refunds as requested by the tax collector. We have Elizabeth Bosker, $7.60, James DiMarco, $7.60, Honda Lease Trust, $129.47, Michael Kerschner, $23.43, Ernest Crestless, $9.93, Ashley Pelletier, $42.16, Tammy Smith, $93.56, for a total of $313.75.
I'll make a motion that we approve these refunds as requested by the tax collector.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion accepted to consider an act on the tax refunds in a total of $313.75 requested by the tax collector. Item number two is to consider an act on the appointment of acting first selectmen in the absence of the first selectmen. So I would like a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we appoint Virginia San Pedro as the acting first selectman in the absence of our first selectman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed to consider an act on the appointment of acting first selectmen in the absence of the first selectman of Virginia San Pedro. Item number three is to consider an act on appointing our town attorneys. So per our charter, section 8-2A, the board of selectmen must appoint by resolution the town council to serve for a term of one year. Currently, right now, we have Robinson and Cole, who is our acting attorney, is our acting attorney for our legal counsel, and Ryan and Ryan is acting as our town labor counsel. Now, I have met and had numerous conversations with both of those attorneys, and I feel very confident because of the years that they have served for the town that I think it's in the town's best interest to probably stay with the attorneys that we have. They understand the needs of the town, and I just think it would be beneficial. And it's so hard to change every time a new elected official comes in. And like I said, I have met with both of them, had many conversations working with them, and I do feel that they are probably the best attorneys right now. And it would be for a one-year term. So again, if I find that in that one year I'm dissatisfied with them, we can change attorneys. Is there any discussion, George?
No, I don't have a problem with them.
I just wondered how they match up for fees.
So both of them have stated to me that there's no increase. And with Ryan and Ryan, there has been no increase like in the last 10 years. And he said if I was to request it, because that's part of the contract when, I guess, they were first bought on, that that's the rate that they would charge. He said unless I request an increase, then they would stay.
Well, that seems very reasonable.
Well, that's what I said too, so.
Then I'll make a motion to reappoint by resolution Robinson and Cole as the town's legal counsel and Ryan and Ryan as the town's labor attorney.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion accepted to consider an act on appointing our town attorneys.
For one year term.
For one-year term. Robinson and Cole as our legal counsel and Ryan and Ryan as our town labor counsel. Item number four is to consider an act on the solar for town problems. We have been investigating solar, ways to save money for the town playing field. And Kyle Collins, who is our community development person, has been doing some investigative work into solar. But not only was Kyle, but our commission also has been, our members of our commission has also been doing the same thing. So they had a meeting, they had a gentleman come out at their last meeting, it's Paul Mashad, and what he does is he works with municipalities. And how that works is he is the voice, but he comes into the municipality, he talks with the towns, and then if the town agrees, he brings in different companies. It's not one company, it's all different solar companies. They come out and they do the inspection on all the different town buildings to see the roof has to be either 10 years, it cannot be older than 10 years. Now, not all buildings may have a roof that it will fit, but you can also do it on a lane. Yes, there's a lane to do it. So one of the things.
Can we get the deed?
Maybe if we get the deed, maybe they could afford it. Sorry. So any discussion, Ginny and George, I would appreciate it because I met with Paul Mashad. Not only did Nick and Wally commission me with him introducing.
No, I was there also.
Yes, you were. I did have a meeting also with Kyle Collins and Rob Farah with Paul Mashad to make sure that they thought it was feasible. They both loved the idea, thought it was a good idea. And my first question to the attorney was, okay, where do your fees come from? And what happens is, say they bring out six or seven different solar companies, whatever solar company that we choose to go with, they are the ones that pay the fee for Paul Mashad. The town does not pay for that. So that's where, for us, it really is kind of a no-brainer because they're going to do all the legwork, they're going to bring the solar companies to us, and then each solar company is going to put in their own bid, and then we have to choose from there.
Yeah, well, the only thing I have against it is putting them on town property roofs. We have always had problems with our roofs, school roofs, or any roof in our public problem. We've always had a problem. What happens if we put solar panels, or solar panels on our roof and then our roof has to be repaired? How are they going to take the solar panels down and repair the roof? I mean, I don't understand what's going to happen there.
Well, if the damage is not from them, George, no, we are still going to be liable. But I can tell you this, that it's a 20-year, it's good for 20 years. And that was like my second question to Paul. So at the end of the 20 years, we can either keep those solar panels, or we can tell them we don't want these anymore. And they're going to come back, take them down, and repair the holes in the roofs. That was a question that I did ask them, and they said yes.
Yeah, well, I'm not just talking about the maintenance of the solar panels on the roofs, I was just talking maintenance of the whole roof itself. That's all I was concerned with because in the past, we've had a lot of problems with roofs on our buildings, as I said. Maybe it would be a better idea to put the solar panels on property somewhere rather than on the roof. That's all I'm asking.
And I can share with you Stafford Springs, and I'm not sure if Rob and Kyle have gone out yet. What Stafford Springs did is they put carports, and they put solar on their carports because their parking lot was so big. And in 20 years, Stafford Springs should see a savings of like $6 million. But again, Stafford Springs has a lot of property that they put it on. But again, Kyle and Rob are going to go out and investigate that.
So what are you looking for?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say tonight.
So right now, all I'm asking is to act on us moving forward with Paul Mashads and having them come out and look at all the town properties. Okay? Because there is no commitment.
No commitment yet.
There is no commitment. All we're committing to is having Paul Mashad handle that and bring all the companies out to look at all our town properties.
Well, I'll make that motion then.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion accepted to consider an act on the solar for the town properties with Paul Mashad.
And then we can say no.
Right.
Like have no cause.
So item number five is to consider an act on ordinance number 119, property tax relief for elderly and totally disabled. So again, when I was out campaigning, I took notes, I listened to a lot of concerns from our residents. I spent a lot of time with senior citizens. You know, and when you're out campaigning, they tell you, you know, five, 10 minutes, you don't have a lot of time. But when you have a person that opens the door and asks you to please come in and listen to their concerns, it's not one of those things that you can look at your watch and be like, oh, I'm sorry, your five minutes are up. I spent a lot of time, half hour, an hour, sitting, talking to people. And one of the biggest concerns I've heard with senior citizens is, how can you help me? You know, our taxes are too high, we can't afford to be here. So one of the things I would like to do is ordinance 119 is, it's an ordinance for elderly and totally disabled. And what that does is the town, if you are on, so there is a program that is in from guideline through the state and for senior citizens. If you qualify for that program, the town will automatically give you $100. And that's what that ordinance 119 is. What I would like to do, and again, this would have to be through a town meeting, so this is just to be able to change this and take it to a town meeting, I would like to increase that from $100 to $250. Now, there are guidelines, like I said, you have to be able to qualify for the homeowners' program, and your taxes have got to be covered. So those are the stipulations in that. So Ginny and George, I would like any discussion that you have, any thoughts, any what your feelings are towards that.
No, I don't have a problem with it. One thing though, I hadn't mentioned to anyone, and I've been thinking about, since you brought this up, I would like for us to do something for like our people who work like on the ambulances, our fire department, the people who are in the fire department. They work so hard and they don't get paid for nothing. I think it would be a good idea, maybe I shouldn't even talk about that right now because it's.
I was going to say, that's not.
I think I'll, I'll just forget it for now, we'll talk about that for next meeting.
I was going to say, we can put that on the agenda for another meeting though, George.
Yeah, right, I'll just, I'm sorry, I'll just.
No, don't be sorry. Don't be sorry.
So that just reduces the amount that we'll take in in taxes? It's not like rebated from the state or anything?
No, no, that is actually from the town. We don't get the numbers from the state for that.
Well, I'll make a motion that we add ordinance 119 for private property tax relief for the elderly and totally disabled for a town meeting.
It has to go to a town meeting.
I'll make that motion and we do that.
It's a ordinance and you have to change it, okay?
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to consider an act on ordinance number 119, property tax relief for elderly and totally disabled, to take it to a town meeting and be able to change the town ordinance Item number six, other? We don't have any other, no.
So is this the point I can make a motion?
Yes, you can make a motion.
I'd like to motion the following onto the agenda, to consider an act on a resolution to amend the town charter.
Ryan will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion accepted to consider an act on a resolution to amend the town charter, adding that to our agenda for tonight. So again, through my campaigning, and since I've been here and reviewing the charter, the ordinances, and state statutes, there are things in our town charter that really do need to be addressed and changed or updated. So what we're looking to do is, our first thing that we would need to do tonight is be able to accept that motion to do that. But then, at our following meeting, we would need to appoint members and we would have to.
Committee, right.
A committee, a charter revision committee. So for tonight, all we're doing is asking for a motion to move forward with that. So Ginny and George, any questions, any discussions that you have that you would like?
I think it's a very good idea. I think some of the things in the charter have to be revised, and it would be a good thing to have a charter revision committee sit down and hash it out, and they come up with some kind of recommendations, that would be good.
No, I agree. We talked a lot about it, but we haven't had one.
Right, it's been a long time, and it really is due to how it's done. And it is a timely process, so the sooner that we can get going on it, the better we'll have the meeting.
So I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the town charter.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has been accepted to adopt a resolution to amend the town charter to move forward At this time, we have covered everything on our agenda, so I would like to open the floor up to public comment. If anybody has any public comments, any questions, any concerns that we can hopefully answer. Just state your name and.
Walter Sweeney, Chairman of the Plankville Conservation Commission. First of all, I'd like to thank the selectmen and selectwomen for your progressive move on the solar project for our town. It's going to save money in the long run, and hopefully we can move forward with it. There's a lot of good ideas, a lot of concerns, and our commission has been working on this idea for quite some time. It's been one of our goals to have a solar, some kind of solar project, no matter how small or how large, to, you know, enhance our town and get us into the 21st century. And Nick, my vice chairman, has some notes that he put together, and I'm going to hand that over to him.
Thank you. And I want to thank you both for the work that you've put into it on the conservation committee. We know that that's all volunteer, and it just, for me, it shows that you really do care about the town and that you're thinking what's best for the town. So I appreciate the work that you've put into it.
So as you mentioned before, we've, you know, we've been in pretty close touch with Paul Micho, you know, for the last month and a half, and, you know, we've got the meeting arranged for you guys. So I hadn't spoken to him for a week since that, your meeting with him, but I did get ahold of him this morning, and he made some recommendations for me now that you are, you know, if it's going to go forward, which he's felt that that probably was the case. He made some recommendations, assuming that I'm going to, you know, get to you. One, I think maybe it was already mentioned, what he said, the town shouldn't rule out any buildings from being possible, you know, sites for the solar. You know, the solar companies will make their assessment, and, you know, I understand your concerns, George, about the roofs, and that there is a 10-year, if the roofs are 10 years or older, then that rules them out, but, you know, the solar companies understand, you know, the details of that. But he said don't rule out any buildings because they might be, it might work for them. So that was one thing. The other item that he mentioned was that, and usually in the procedure of how he works with the towns, which he's done five or six, you know, projects, I think, over the last year and a half or two years, a committee is formed that does the scrutinizing of the, when the solar companies come up with their proposals, rather than a single person or just a selectman, you know, reviewing the information that a committee is formed, and a group, you know, a small group committee does that, you know, review and assessment of the information that the town gets. And he said that has worked out, you know, well in the past for all the towns, and it's a more even, you know, consensus kind of procedure rather than just one person. So that's what he told me. So, you know, with that said, you know, if it was all right with the, you know, selectmen that, you know, we could help put a committee together and submit some names and get that done so that, you know, he will have that in place when the time comes.
Thank you, Nick.
So we would, you know, we would come up with a list of names and submit it to you folks, and you can sign off on it. That's all I have.
Does anybody have any comment or questions, public comment, to what Wally and Nick have contributed?
I mean, I like the solar panels.
Your name, please?
I'm sorry, Laura Stavala Musa. I do like the idea of solar panel, but it would be nice to be able to include probably the streetlights with those. I mean, anywhere you go throughout, like, I go to New Jersey a lot, they have solar panels on every streetlight, and even Norwich, I think, has them as well. And they're pretty common in most places that you go. You see them on the highways, you see them in the towns for at least a year, if I want to make sure I'm saying that right, for the project. So we would want to move on it within a year so that we can get the funding for it.
Okay, because I had heard a March deadline earlier on at another meeting. That is not the case?
March of this year?
Yes.
I think that is the case. I think there is a March deadline.
There is a March deadline.
So does that give us our time to do our due diligence and stuff like that? That's how I want to make sure.
But the money is there, yes.
I, money is one thing, I want to make sure we do our due diligence.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and don't jump at this because it's going to, March, we have to have an answer by.
Right.
The program might come back out again, we don't know.
But the thing is, Sean, like I said, even if we move on this and go forward, we can say no. So there's, it's a really a win-win situation because at the end, no matter what, we can walk away from it if we, if we don't like what all of those solar companies have said to us. If we, if we don't like what all of those solar companies have said to us, we have no commitment.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't wanna jump too fast because we have a deadline made and then find out what hurt myself in the end.
And actually, to get back to that deadline, Kyle had already been working with a company that he had asked me to please sign these papers to bring in a solar company. And I was like, no, I'm not signing these until I do more research. And then Wally and Nick had contacted me, so I need... It just, this is a good situation, it really is a good situation for the town because we're gonna be able to talk to a lot of different companies and walk away at the end if we're not. Please could let me tell you.
As long as we can walk away and we don't jump at something because of a deadline. That's the only I'm concerned about.
Good question, Sean, thank you.
Sue Hall, Central Village, and I'm on the Conservation Commission also. One of the good things about this would be that you would do, you would get the basic information to use in the future about where, you know, our buildings, what's the energy usage of each building. You would have that information ready to use at another time if you didn't go with this particular company. So, you're doing your ground, you'll have, you would have your groundwork. I have a question about probate court. How will probate court run if the, you know, the town hall is closed on Fridays?
Probate court, if we keep the pool up in Friday mornings, probate court is only here for a few hours. But her and I have also had discussion and she's also talked to Canterbury and to Sterling and she may just not do Friday hours. So, that is really, I can't tell her what to do. She's probate court. But the, we will be open Friday morning, so that is her choice.
I'll tell you, there is a lot going on in probate court and there are people in constantly talking to the paralegals' help 'cause I gotta go through with two relatives this year. And you need that information. When you're trying to fill out seven or six forms, your inventory, you need to get it from... And sometimes the paralegals that are downstairs, they give you a little bit different information. So, I'm very concerned if it was closed. Plus, lawyers around say that the probate court is running behind.
While the probate court was closed today, it'll be closed on Washington's birthday. Today was President's Day, I think.
Lincoln's birthday.
Lincoln's birthday.
Oh, Lincoln's. I know they closed Lincoln's, President's Day, and Washington's birthday this month.
Right, if you have a hearing or if you're trying to get information, you're stuck, you're stuck. I have another question about the hours at the town hall. How many hours originally was the town hall open?
So, the town hall was open Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00.
How many hours a week on Friday?
A week would be 40 hours.
Then how many hours?
So, now we would be 37 hours. But those hours are more convenient for working people.
Oh, I have no problem with helping working people. Are they getting paid the same for 40 hours from 37?
Well, our union contracts, we have to abide by our union contracts. So, our employees are still within their union contracts.
So, they're getting paid for 40 hours?
They don't work 40 hours.
35 hours.
They work 35 hours.
35 hours a week.
It's open, but you see they...
But they get an hour lunch and that's per their union contract.
So, you're paying for lunch?
So, now they'll get a half hour lunch to be within the, to get their 35 hours.
Yeah, all the union employees work 35 hours a week.
All the union?
And the non-union? I would assume they're all union, I mean...
I didn't think they were all union. I thought you had some that are non-union, you know, some that are union. I don't know, I'm just asking, you know, is it equal to what it was before?
It will be.
And is the housing authority gonna be affected downstairs? Carol Mercy?
Yes.
So, she won't come in on Friday?
She will not.
And I had a question about the ordinance. Is that in our charter or is that a state ordinance?
No, the ordinance 119, that is our ordinance.
That's ours?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause some towns actually freeze their seniors' taxes after a certain age. So, this is a town ordinance. How much did we used to pay?
They used to do $100 and what I would like to do is increase it to $100.
What was that line item? I mean, how much, how many people? I mean, is it a thousand people?
No, there's 50 people on it. There was 50 people.
50?
Five of them, yeah. Not that goes to 250, thinking you're gonna get a whole bunch of people more signing up for it?
No, because they still have to qualify for the other program, which is per age. You have to be a homeowner, it's per age and it's per income.
Right, so you have to figure out every year approximately how much money you're gonna put in that line item for this.
Well, we would know based on who's on our program. So, who's on the state program, they are the only people that will qualify, just like now. The only way they get that $100 is if they qualify for the homeowners.
I think you're gonna find more people are going to qualify with the way things are.
Well, the income, though, is per state. We cannot change the income, the state regulates that.
So, is that like 12,000 a year?
Oh, my God, no, no, I can tell you. So, in order to qualify for the homeowners program, so you must be 65 years or old, years old as of 12/31/2017. Or you could be disabled too. And then, your income for 2017 must not exceed $43,000 for a married couple or $35,300 for a single. So, and those are the, those income guidelines are set by the state. So, that's part of the problem, not a lot of senior citizens qualify for this program. And that's why, to me, this program is important. Because, I mean, I know $100 or $250 is not a lot compared to your taxes, but it, it's a little bit of a help, you know, it's a little bit of a help. And we cannot change the income guidelines. That's why I would like to be able to change the ordinance and be able...
In the charter, we have to revisit that ordinance in our charter, right?
Well, the ordinance, yes.
Your ordinance?
Ordinance 119, yes.
That's not part of the charter.
No.
That's not part of the charter.
But again, you have to go to a town meeting and that would have to be approved by the residents that we increase from $100 to $250.
Do you think by doing that, you're gonna get more residents that are gonna be qualified? 'Cause that's, I mean, there's a lot of disabled people that probably don't know about that program.
And you know what, that's okay. But again, they have to qualify.
And that's a good thing, you have to be a homeowner.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't cover vehicle taxes.
No.
Yeah, okay, so that's, might be the same increase that way. 'Cause I mean, there's a lot of disabled people in town as well.
And it's not a reduction of their taxes, it's actually giving them a check or cash or...
It's applied towards their taxes.
Oh, it is. They don't get the money.
Yes, but yes.
It's applied towards their taxes. We don't actually give them the charge. It's applied directly to their taxes. So, do we have any...
Matt Radan from Musaf. First, regarding the solar panel idea. So, I think there's a lot of value in getting that appraisal done, looking at all of the town buildings, deciding which roofs would be worthwhile going after. I get the feeling that it's not gonna be all of the town buildings, but I would, I would hope that we're not undertaking this if we didn't have a significant number of roofs that we could hopefully qualify. But I would be so careful about the cost-benefit analysis on this project going forward. 20 years is a very long time to try to stretch financials out in any kind of accurate manner. And while the idea of solar panels on buildings might be really good for a two or three-year program, I'd imagine that part of the cost-benefit analysis that Paul or whatever the energy company putting this up is gonna present is credits on the power grid. Because I don't, as I understand it, there's no, there's no storage component to this. We don't have batteries that we're charging. We don't have that technology readily available for the town to use. So, part of that cost savings, I get the feeling, is gonna be presented in a way of the energy companies probably crediting the bills. And this is part conjecture, this is how I would imagine it coming forward. There's a lot of energy companies across the United States that are reducing the rates of reimbursement for people who have solar panels on homes, on buildings, because they're taking a bath on it. And if you don't think that's gonna be something brought up over a 20-year period, then we haven't done our homework. So, I'm not under the impression any of us has a crystal ball and we can see exactly what the energy companies are gonna be interested in doing, but I guarantee you, they're not interested in losing money. So, let's be very, very careful about the cost-benefit analysis that is presented to us on that matter. This, I don't know if a shorter, this sounds like a lease. Honestly, we're not purchasing the panels here, this would be its one-way lease. So, perhaps a shorter timeframe on that lease would be something more ideal. Maybe we can, you know, work some pretty creative exit clauses to this if we find things starting to turn against us. That might be something to build in there for reimbursement rates. 'Cause absent a battery to charge, this idea could end up costing us a ton of money down the road. We have no idea what that situation's gonna look like 10, 15 years, especially with the fiscal climate and the state being what it is, so...
It sounds like you should be on our commission.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, that's the importance of having a commission.
It's a handout that Paul shared, check out.
Solar companies going out of business. Recently, I have heard that there are several of them that, you know, are moving out of Connecticut. But there's supposedly so many around, but... And then Everstark is supposed to start increasing their rates for businesses. Like, my friend owns a business and they say their parents are not gonna be able to run their business because they're gonna, they put solar panels in with a company, but then somehow Everstark is tied in there and they're not gonna give them a break. But, like I said, we can get information.
Keep in mind, what you lease, you don't own, but you don't own, but you are fully liable. And that sounds like a bad idea over a long period of time for a small town like ours. Second point, I just had a question regarding the Amending the Town Charter Act. That was added in under other. I was just curious as to why that was not on the agenda.
No, a motion was, it was omitted by accident from the agenda, that's fine.
Okay. And my third final question is, town meetings that were moved on at the previous meeting in January, I believe it was regarding sidewalk clearing and there was renter, renters fee. Where can someone go to find out when those town meetings are?
Those town meetings, as soon as they're set, which will be once I'm back to work and this ordinance will also, and that's why I wanted to get this one. Those meetings will be set, we'll make sure that it's on our webpage, but we'll also advertise for those meetings to, to make sure that we can get residents to come out and attend the meetings.
Thank you.
So, the SaaS link up, I noticed tonight that you didn't limit the open discussion through just agenda items. That's the way it used to be, will it be going back to that format?
So, this is not a special meeting, Joe?
Okay, so only special meetings can you do that?
Only special meetings you cannot.
Okay, but you have said that, I'm just, thank you.
So, at a regular meeting?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, when you usually, Robert's a ruler of the water, you usually, if you're gonna add something to your agenda, you, it's said in the beginning, it doesn't mean you talk about it in the beginning. It says that you make the, make the motion to put it in when you stop the, stop the meeting. 'Cause somebody could have left this meeting not knowing that was gonna be on it.
According to my understanding, and I called and checked to make sure that I was correct and they said it has to be at the end of your agenda that you add that motion on, not at the beginning. You have to go through your full agenda that you already have.
What about, because I remember town meetings where people made the, select people made the motion at the beginning of a town meeting to do something that had not been put on the agenda.
A town meeting, I believe, has different rules, Susan, but I, I will check into it, but I know I called today and checked to make sure that I was doing it right.
And we did it the right way. We checked.
Good, well, that's good. I just, some people could have left and not known it was on the agenda.
I just have one more question. It doesn't relate to anything on agendas, I don't worry. I just wanna add a question where I can find out information regarding possibly getting a street sign put up on the corner of Salisbury and Prospect. Cars are parking either on the crosswalk or right up, real close to it and you can't see when you're coming down Prospect, especially if there's a line of cars. And sometimes, three, four times a day, I'm, I'm still taking... I called the police twice.
I was gonna say Mario.
I have called twice, well, I've sent emails twice and I asked him about a sign over a week ago and I never got a response back. So, I was here tonight, so I wanted to ask how I would go about requesting a sign or asking to get a sign put in. 'Cause the law is, you have to park 25 feet from a crosswalk.
I will reach out to Mario and let him know that you requested it and that you have contacted him, you said twice?
Yeah, the first time he got back to me and the second time he hasn't, so he maybe, just thought he maybe he didn't need to, but I did, I didn't ask him about the sign the first time, I just asked him about the parking.
Okay.
And then the second time, I asked about parking plus the sign. So, maybe he just didn't read the full email either 'cause he knew what, actually, I had done it prior.
I thought I was telling him.
Okay, thank you.
I'm checking on that for you, okay?
I appreciate it.
Have any other public comments?
Yeah, she parks every day, she's her.
Any other public comments?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our meeting is adjourned on February 12th, 2018 at 7:51 PM. Thank you all for attending.